All right. My name is Kevin Coyne, Chairman of Zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Fairfield. I'm calling to order zoning board of appeals, meeting and hearing, February 4, 2021. Where first we have executive session for a special meeting. We have two items on the agenda. The first is approval of the minutes from January of 2021. Entertainer motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Sir, a second?
Second.
Thanks, Kate. Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, bring it to a vote. Where did Terry go?
Someone's made a copy.
I can vote.
Okay, all right, thanks. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand so I get it. Appeal?
Aye.
Jane? Can you hear me, Jane? Can anyone else hear me?
I can't.
Okay. We have a problem on Jane's end. Well, that passed, even though Jane couldn't vote. Just if you can hear us, that did pass. Let's see if we can correct that before the next.
You ready?
Got to make sure Jane can hear us. Just static. Jane, do you want to sign back in? Matt, can you text her to see if we can have her just sign back in? Maybe that's, is everyone else here for me?
I'll text her right now, Mr. Chairman.
All right, while we're waiting to sign back in, Daphne can step in for this. And the next item is approval of secretary fees. Entertainer motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Sir, a second? Daphne, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, those members. Again, if you'd like to, say aye, raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. And let's just wait a moment for, see if we can get Jane back on for the technical difficulties. But before that, for anyone that's on, online, listening in or on this, we have a couple items, three items that are continued. On our, on our, there is the first one listed, but that's continued, that's already been continued to April 1, that's 30 Daybreak Road. The second item is the continued docket number 10, that's 275 North Cedar, that's continued to next month. Another item, the last two items on this agenda, 14 and 15. 14 is 195 Old South Road, 865 Pequot Avenue, that's been continued to the next hearing. And number 15, 146 Chelsea Street, that's also continued to our next hearing. No business on those items today. Jane, Jane, how is it now?
Perfect.
Good, great. All right. Took care of the preliminaries, Jane, with Daphne. And she's going to be sitting in on her floor for you, so you'll sit tight for a moment, Daphne, and then we'll be sitting in for Jane on that. But now I'm going to call it to order zoning board of appeals, February 4, 2021, special meeting and hearing. In light of COVID-19 pursuant to executive order 7B, the town is conducting this meeting via teleconference only. There's a call-in line and there are people that are on the WebEx video. Please be patient with everything. Do my best to make sure everyone is heard. Whenever you're going to speak, it's helpful if you introduce yourself first, so if I know who's speaking and what matter you want to speak on. I'll go over our call to order in a minute and it will explain things a little further, but just, I request you be patient. If you're not speaking, please mute your, your audio there so we don't hear you and don't have feedback. It's, it's the easiest if everyone is mute except for the person that's speaking. I even, sometimes I even forget to unmute myself. I try to do that myself, so someone will remind me because when my mouth is moving and they're not, not hearing anything. But I ask everyone to try to do the same thing and it will just make it much easier for everyone else to hear. So now I'm going to call it to order. When a matter is called, I'll be making the call, I'll be discussing what's on the agenda for each matter. It's very important that that is very clear. So again, everyone make sure you're muted. Then while the applicant is presenting their case, I'll invite the applicant or their agent to present the case for their matter. If you want us to, if you want to review, we have, everything has been received. We've had it through email or we have, it's been delivered to us. So if you want to refer to stuff, just highlight what you want us to look at, since we're not in the same room, but just to let us know what you request that we'll be, definitely will do that. If you do have things that are shared and you want to do a share screen and you have the ability to do that, you can do that as well, just, you know, take your time again and so. After the applicant's presentation, anyone that's interested is going to be invited to speak. At that time, we'll open up to allow people that are on the call-in to speak. I will first, I will ask generally, if there's anyone that has any comment on an application, I like to go in order and I like to get the people that are in favor of it first and then if there's anyone opposed to it next. So I want you to identify yourself and whether you're in favor or against, and I'll try, I will take you in order of those in favor first and those against afterwards. After, and if there is any opposition, I will then allow the applicant or his or her agent to speak directly to any opposing comments. I'd ask the applicant or agent at that time to restrict your comments to a rebuttal format and out of time to restate your application. The meeting, although it's going through WebEx, it's also going to be recorded and it's going to be recorded separately, so we have a record. So we need to be very careful to make sure it's clear and we can understand the record. So only one person can speak at a time and anyone who does speak, you need to give your name and address. I welcome the comments of anyone who's interested in any particular matter, whether you're in favor or against it. I want, the board wants to hear all comments on every matter. However, as chairman, I will reserve my right to restrict your comments at any time if you are off the point. We will go through, the docket is not that long, but we may need, depending on how long it takes for, to get through everything, you never know. We may take a short break and then we will immediately reconvene on everything that goes forward today. And once I close a hearing on a matter, a hearing is closed and we will be voting today. So everything that goes forward today, and I close, we're voting on. Five voting members for each application. For your application to be granted, you need a super majority. You need four, at least four of the five zoning board of appeals members to vote in favor of your application. If it is a simple majority, three to two in favor, your application is going to be denied. You can stay on the call and you can listen to our conversation. We allow you to hear what we're talking about in your application, it's your application. But we're just discussing it and making decisions. You're entitled to stay. If you cannot, don't worry about that, contact the zoning office tomorrow or later to find out what happened. Last applicant for waiver is granted. It will not be valid until it's recorded. Therefore, you need to bring or send, a check made out to the Town of Fairfield, an amount of $60, and bring it to the zoning office or send it to the zoning office Wednesday or later following the meeting. Any wave of public construction, whether it's a new dwelling, an addition, owner alteration, that will require an ass bill prior to the issuance of any certificate of zoning compliance and certificate of occupancy. And to remind people, as to some of the items on our agenda, number 10 on the continued docket, 275 North Cedar, has been continued to next month. And number 14 and number 15, number 14 is 195 Old South Road, 865 Pequot Avenue, and 15 is 146 Chelsea Street, those are also continued to next month. The first matter that we have business on, it's number one on our general docket, and that is 713 Reading Road, map 218, that's 21. Addition of Gina Lito for variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line setback of 60 feet, currently 19.6 feet, proposing 23.7 feet. Permission to construct additions to existing dwelling premises, AAA zone. I think we have the agent, Mr. Tierney, is presenting that?
Yes. Everyone can hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great, all right, well, thank you, Chairman, thank you, board. Yes, I am the agent for Ms. Lito, I'm her architect, and I know that you are all in receipt of the existing survey, the proposed survey, as well as a series of architectural drawings. If you all refer to the existing survey, you can see that the existing house is a series of really three different volumes, and the smallest volume is the volume that is closest to the street. It is the existing non-conforming situation in which that existing one-story portion of this farmhouse is 19.6 feet from the street. The largest volume on the lot, that portion of the existing house, that foundation is not structurally.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can you hold on one second? I think we lost the conference bridge. I don't, I don't know, but I can't hear you through the conference bridge anymore. If you could just bear with us for one moment, please.
Sure.
We're holding, I see a couple people that are on the video, your video's not up, but your name is there and you're not muted. Please, that's Bart Stanko, Chase. Please mute your microphones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're just going to have Matt just redial again to reconnect the two lines. We're not really sure what happened, but it dropped the, the audio, so our apologies.
This is Bart, I am on the bridge and I am muted, I just unmuted to acknowledge that.
All right.
Yep, I think we're back.
Can you hear me?
Thank you so much for your patience.
Do you want me to have the commission speak?
Yes, Ms. Tierney, why don't you pick up? You were talking, probably we're cut out, it was when you were talking about the existing one-story addition, which, or structure, which is 19.6 feet from the road, and then you started to talk about the larger volume where addition is coming. Why don't you pick up from that point?
Yes. So with the addition, you know, as the designer for this project, I wanted to be sensitive again to that existing non-conformance. And so since the existing, the largest bulk of the house, that structure is not solvent, we're going to be, we would like to request relief, to move that portion of the house actually further away from the street now. So it will still be a non-conforming condition, but it is improving upon the existing non-conformance. So that smallest volume is 19.6 feet from the street, the larger volume at the moment is 22.8, and what we are proposing is for that larger volume to move further back away from the street to 24.3 feet away from the street. And I'd also like just to bring the board's attention to the fact that even at that 24.3 feet, that is, we're proposing a porch in that area. So again, to the main portion, the main face of the bulk of the house, that would be another additional six feet away from the street, bringing the main portion of the house to 30.3 feet away from the house. I'd also like to bring the board's attention to the fact that in terms of lot coverage, the, we're proposing a coverage of 4.9% with an allowable of 10. So we are well in conformance. And also in terms of FAR, the FAR we're proposing is 8.2, again, well into conformance of the allowable at 15%. And also, I'd like to bring the board's attention to the fact that there is a previous approved variance to construct a garage on this site, which actually located the garage closer than the garage that we're proposing. So again, we're hoping that you might approve our petition to the board based on the fact that we are improving the existing non-conformances.
Thank you, Ms. Tierney. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Tierney? And I think Ms. Lito was on the call as well, if there's any questions? Yes, Jane?
Hi. This is sort of a question for the, for Ms. Tierney or anybody else who wants to weigh in, Matt. When you're doing a, you know, work on that, on a house, if it's more than 50% of the assessed value or praised value, you have to bring the entire house up to code, does that translate to the zoning as well, Matt? Or Ms. Tierney?
I'd actually probably need Matt to weigh in on that.
Like, at what point is it like there's not enough of the existing house left to call it existing, that you would just start over?
That would fall, Mr. Chairman and Commission, that would fall under only homes that are, that fall under the FEMA criteria.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
And this house on Reading Road is not in the flood zone.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Matt, I'm, I'm sorry, but we can't hear you again.
Can anyone hear me?
I can't.
I can't hear you through the speaker line. Through the conference bridge. Through the conference bridge.
Okay. I don't know what to tell you. So no one can hear me, is that correct?
I can't hear you through the conference bridge.
We hear you just fine. I can hear you fine.
I can hear you through the WebEx, but not through conference bridge.
Okay, well, then I'll speak into the computer.
Yeah, but you have, you have people attending the public hearing that can't hear the public hearing, so we have to wait for we to connect the two. Otherwise, we have to invite them to the WebEx.
All right, then I'll have to disconnect the conference in again.
Yep.
All right. We'll have to turn a minute while we're fixing that.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, one minute.
For those of you on the conference bridge, we're reconnecting again. In the meantime, if you want to unmute and let me know which item you'd like to speak on, that would be helpful.
This is Sam Gardner, I'm going to be talking on 801 Post Road.
I'm Ron Friedson, I'm talking on 56 Shoreham Terrace.
This is Bart Stanko, and if needed, I'll be speaking about 801 Post Road.
Hi, this is John Shavinsky, I'm on item number 4, 235 Fairmount Terrace.
I'll be speaking on behalf of 72 Fairfield Place.
I'm sorry, repeat your name again real quick.
Kurt Stevie, C-I-H-I. I represent Black Rock Builders, and my client will possibly be joining, Christine Stasko. Thank you.
What is that? 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 What is that?
Somebody's radio's on.
We're in somebody's.
Matt, can you hit phone number nine, please?
Hey, Ellen.
Whoever call in user number nine is, if you could call yourself.
I want to be unmuted, I can't put it on at all. So go to. It's just operating. See, look at this.
I think you should, yeah. I think you should like.
Of course you can, because they're talking in here and it's connected.
I haven't bridged it. I, I, I'm just calling a number, I haven't even got to the conference.
Unless I'm bridging the number, but I didn't dial in.
Everybody's kind of disappeared, can anybody hear me?
Careful. I'm saying, it's not connecting to audio here. Anything?
Fine.
Jim, can you hear me?
Here's Kevin. Hey. Is this just me or?
The reverb went away.
They're connecting to audio, watch.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it says you're not on audio.
We texted, it said you're on audio.
Now you're connected.
Okay. Kevin, you hear me?
Jim or Kevin, can somebody hear me?
I can hear you, Matt. Is that where you're at?
This is Ron Friedson, I'm just trying to see if anybody can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Wait, thank you.
Till we get to your item.
No, I'm muted, I just, all this stuff.
Okay, I think, I think we're back on.
We are, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, I just, we're trying to make sure Terry Keegan's connected. What I'm going to need you to, Matt, is to mute Terry's, and then he'll have to wave and you unmute him when he needs to speak.
Okay.
Okay.
It doesn't even give me the option to mute him.
It doesn't? Oh.
So, um, you can see it also, wait a minute.
I can play mute and unmute myself. Terry's computer is just running.
Right. I can't, I don't even have the option to mute Terry.
Why don't you just say, maybe you need to drop the PDF, it may help him.
Terry can vote. I'm sorry, Brian.
Terry can hear, so we can't see him, but when it's time to vote, he can just, over here.
All right. You okay with that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, as long as he can hear. All right, and. All right, and word of his tyranny, go. There you are, okay. We're, we were at questions from the board. Any other questions? We had one from Jane. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Okay, now here's the super test to see if the connection did work. Now, I invite this up to anyone on the call-in. Is there anyone that has a comment, whether you're in favor or against this application, which is number one on our general target, 2713 Reading Road? Is there anyone that has a comment? Okay, hearing none. The hearing is now closed on 2713 Reading Road. Thank you very much, Ms. Tierney. Thank you.
Thank you.
Forations in a little disjointed presentation, but...
Thank you all very much.
All the information came out. Next, the matter that we have is number two. And that is 1995, 1996 Fairfield Beach Road, map 234, parcel 60 and 154, petition of Nancy Samuelson for a variance of zoning regulations, section 11.10 to increase the lot coverage from 20%, currently 18.8% proposing 23.8% and 11.1.4.1 to finish a floor area in a detached structure. Permission to construct a detached garage with finished living area above the base flood elevation premises, BD zone. And Attorney Russo? Go ahead, sir.
Yes, Chairman, thank you. Chris Russo with Russo and Rizzio LLC, address at Tensasco Hill Road in Fairfield, here on behalf of Nancy Samuelson. Good to be before you. We're here for an approval of a detached accessory garage on the Pine Creek side of Fairfield Beach Road across from the main residence of Ms. Samuelson, which is at 1995 Fairfield Beach Road. This garage actually has already received an approval in 2010. It, in 2010, Ms. Samuelson came in for approval of her main house and a detached garage across the street. And this board granted her variances for the garage. And I'm going to try right now to share that original plan. Bear with me one second. Just loading here. Okay. Is that, is that survey showing up on the... Wait, oh, here, it looks like it's coming right here. Hold on. Okay. Think, is it cheering now? Is that coming on?
It's up.
It's up now? Okay, great. So this was the, the original site plan back in 2010 that was approved by this board. And again, was for construction of her, her main residence, which is, which is right here on the, on the beach side. And then also a 21-foot by 16 and a half-foot detached garage across the street. And she received the necessary approvals for that. Subsequently, she built the, the dwelling that's there now, the main dwelling that exists today. But she did not move forward with the detached garage. She is now looking to move forward with a detached garage that's the same footprint. It's 21 feet by 16 and a half feet and is looking for approval for that. So the question is, why, why are we here asking for variances? The first is, the lot itself has actually changed since 2010. So I'm going to show you the, what's the current site plan. So in 2012, the coastal jurisdiction line was amended. And over the past 10, 11 years, there's actually been erosion on this site. So her lot area has actually decreased. She was at around 7,400, and now she's down to 6,900. So for factors that are outside of her control, you know, nothing she actually did, she, her lot lost area. And interestingly, so she was approved in 2010, her lot coverage was 22.8%. If we applied what we are proposing today and put it on that lot from back in 2010, her coverage would actually be going down. She'd be going down to 22.1%. So this plan is actually, has less impervious than the 2010 plan. But because she lost, because she lost this, this lot area, her coverage is going up to 23.8%. I, I, to be honest, I actually think there's an argument about whether or not she actually needs this variance because she does have an approved site plan to put a, the exact footprint garage with actually less impervious from back in 2010. But because, you know, lots, lots on Fairfield Beach can change like this over the years. I mean, there, I was, I was talking to Jason Spaff, who's a surveyor, and he said, you know, a storm could hit, you know, in, in the next month, and it could change her lot area again. It could, it could reduce it, it could increase it. My father lives on, lives on Fairfield Beach Road as well. And in the 30 years since he's lived there, his, his, his lot area's actually increased. There's, there's been sand that's been dumped on, on his property. So it's something that is, is, you know, in flux constantly. And it just so happens for her lot, it has decreased her lot area. But what she is proposing as far as a garage, it's the, it's the exact same footprint as, as what she had proposed in 2010. Her other, her other variances stem from the new FEMA regulations. And I'll switch over to her floor plan. In 2010, she originally proposed a garage that had a, you know, a garage level for a parking car and then had a living area on top of it, one floor on top of it for a, a art studio, which is what she intends to use it for. Since the new FEMA regulations, this has now changed, and she needs to, one, she needs to raise the, the first floor, the ground, the ground garage floor to, to have her lowest structural member at the, at the right height, according to the new FEMA regs. And she also has breakaway walls proposed on the, the ground floor. Because she now has breakaway walls, she wants to have an additional floor above that floor that was approved for storage. Because even though there, there, you know, there's a wall there, it's a breakaway wall and, and on, on the, on the ground floor. And it's not really a, a secure place if you're going to be storing things there. And so she now intends to, or is asking to, above the floor that she had, already has approved, to have another floor where she can, we can, where she can store her things. And, and she has a, a deck off of the, the back facing Pine Creek. But it's really driven by the, the new requirements for the FEMA regulations and redesigning this, this garage. It's, but again, it's the same exact footprint. And it, she, she was already approved for a finished livable floor above that garage. But now it's just an additional, an additional floor above so she can have, you know, a proper storage room. And, and you can see it here on the plans. Here's the studio, and I'm, I apologize. She, when she was originally approved, the floor plan said art studio, and it should have, it should have said on this plan, art studio as well. I think that word might think, might make people think that this is for something different. It's, it's not, it's not a dwelling. It's only got a half bath. It doesn't have kitchen facilities, doesn't have a full bath. It's, it's, it's just a half bath that's meant for art studio space for her. And then it leads to a second living floor that has the storage and then a deck off here that, that face Pine Creek. It's certainly something that we feel is in conformity with the neighborhood. We've been before this board and got, and, and received similar approvals for finished living space above a garage as long as it didn't have a, a full bath and, and kitchen and, and that's, and that's what we have here. I have some photos if I can. I'll switch to, bear with me a second to pull up some photos. Okay. So this is, you know, in the 10 years since she originally received this approval, the Pine Creek side of Fairfield Beach Road has, has definitely undergone some changes. And you will see a lot of structures like, like this one. Here's another that are on the, on the Pine Creek side and are, we believe our garage is in conformity with the character of this side of the street. So dwelling. This is another building that we got approved just a few doors down from Mrs. Samuelson. Same type of thing. It's another house. This is, this is a picture of where this garage would go. It's a vacant lot now, obviously. And you can see that, you know, it can easily fit a, a single-car garage on it. This is the dwelling across the street that exists today. And showing back in the lot. Another view of it. And that's, that's the end of the photos. So that's essentially it. Again, we, I already, the, the ZBA approvals recorded that she received previously in 2010 for a garage of the same exact footprint that did have finished living area above it, except it was only one-story. And our hardship is based on two environmental factors that were really outside of her control. The first being the erosion of the site and, and the adjustment of the coastal jurisdiction line, which reduced her lot area. We're presenting a plan that has less impervious area but needs a, a, a greater coverage variance because of that. And then the second just being the FEMA regulations, which required the redesign of the garage to raise it, raise, raise the height of the, the ground floor and then for her to locate storage above that, that living area. But we feel it's consistent with the neighborhood. There's a petition that I submitted from her budding neighbors that were in support of it. And we believe, yeah, it's in conformity with the neighborhood and, and what's built already on the Pine Creek side of Fairfield Beach Road. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Attorney Russo. The board have questions for Attorney Russo. Brian, yes, go ahead.
I'm just curious if there's been any consideration or any study on further erosion that may have... I know that raising the building helps with the tides and stuff, but is there any study on further erosion that may put their structure at risk?
I don't think, this structure, I'm, I'm not sure that there would be any risk to this particular structure that's proposed. I mean, that lot, and all lots on Fairfield Beach are, are at risk of, you know, of erosion. And again, some, some have lost, some have lost lot area. But I know my, my father's property, I think, is game lot area. He's, he's, has a jetty there and, and it's caught some of the sand. And so it's just a constantly changing nature. This, this property on the, the nice part about this, this particular property on the, on the creek side is they have a, a bulkhead already there. And, you know, so that lot, and that's, that portion of the lot is pretty, pretty sturdy. It's not one of the other ones that you see on the, on the Pine Creek side that are just open to Pine Creek and, you know, sometimes are constantly shifting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Yes, Katie?
A question. Reading the statute 11.1.4.1, it says specifically that no detached accessory structure shall contain any finished livable floor area, plumbing fixtures, or heat. So what's, what's the...
What are we missing?
We're missing, like, what's the hardship that should be able to have livable space and plumbing and heat?
Well, one, this is, this has already been approved for finished livable area at this, at this site in the 2010 variance that was, that was approved. And so we're, we're merely increasing that to, to accommodate for the fact that, you know, we were hoping to store on the ground floor the, when we had the, the 2010 garage approved. But with the new FEMA regs, we, we don't feel it's, it's secure that, so we add it on top. It was already approved for finished livable area. And it's, 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 it's similar than a lot of applications. We were just here on an application that was three doors down. That same, it was a garage that had finished livable area above it. And, you know, this, this board has, has, has been very reasonable. And I think if somebody comes with a, a plan that, you know, there's no full bath, there's no kitchen, so it's not going to be utilized as, as some type of additional dwelling, that this board has, has approved those applications. And we, we've been here multiple times before, asking, asking for this particular variance and, and are proposing something that has been in those parameters. You know, no, no full bath, no kitchen, just something that's used for, you know, that you can use as an office, which is certainly, I mean, something during the, you know, endemic. Having a, having a, having a space at home that, that is separate from your dwelling where you can work has, has certainly been, you know, something that a lot of people are looking for now.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Hearing no other questions, and I'll invite the people on call-in. If they have comments, please let us know. Give us your name and whether you are in favor or in opposition to this particular application, 1995, 1996 Fairfield Beach Road. Hearing none. Just let me point out, before I close the hearing on this...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There is somebody on the call, Becky Bunnell.
Oh, okay. I was just going to point out that Bunnell submitted something I didn't hear. Go ahead, Ms. Bunnell.
I'm sorry, I don't know if you can hear me, but...
I can hear you.
I'm basically in support of this. I'm, I'm basically in support of this because of the prior variance. But I, I would like to just make a, a comment regarding whether these kinds of things should be approved in the future. My feeling is, is that with sea level rise and with more intense storms, you're going to be seeing more lot reduction, probably more erosion in the future. And my feeling is buyer beware. People should be aware of the fact that their lots on Fairfield Beach Road are likely to be reduced in size, and they, they shouldn't be able to use that as a hardship to ask for extra lot coverage, in my personal opinion. I think we need to, as a town, be very conscious of how much building we're doing in the beach area because it's just not prudent. in the beach area because it's just not prudent to be building more than, more than the existing regulations. I don't have anything against people improving their properties. I think that's everyone's right. But I don't think we should be giving variances to build larger structures than need be. But however, that being said, this was approved back in 2010, so I, I see no reason not to support this going forward. The other request I'd give regarding the living area, the 11.1.4.1. It does feel like a lot of these kinds of living spaces have been approved in the past. So I would actually request that the zoning board of appeals ask the planning and zoning commission to possibly, or, or planning and zoning department to consider changing the regulations. Because I believe the intent of that was we don't want these to be rentable units. And we don't want these to be split off as a separate dwelling unit. So if we could just mandate that if there is any livable space over a garage or accessory structure, it's never allowed to be rented and there would be a fine if anyone is caught renting it. I think that would address the issue and the intent of the original 11.1.4.1 and it would involve a zoning change, I believe. But I think the intent was to keep the population and traffic and number of people in a, in a, in a, you know, in a, in a beach area which is going to be at risk from more sea level rise and storms down. And not to have additional dwelling units be created. That's, that is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bunnell. I, you know, the comments on the 11.1.4.1 are well taken and that is something that we don't have any control over, but the planning and zoning would have to amend their regulations. But, so you're right on the money on that one. Anyone else comments?
Hello? Hello? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Samuelson, yes. Yes. Very thanks.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
I can barely hear you.
Hello? I'm sorry, it's very interesting that you said.
I can barely hear you.
I don't know. I'll try again. I just wanted to.
Chairman, I think there's a lot of. That, and that's. It's making.
Attorney Russo, I think it's, you're coming in loud and clear. Ms. Bunnell came in loud and clear. I just think Ms. Samuelson is microphone turned down. I mean, I can hear everyone else pretty well.
If I could ask you just to repeat that on the line, go ahead.
You mean me on the line?
No, she's trying to speak. And I can hear her in the conference bridge, but it's not translating over to your line. So I'm just going to ask her to try one more time.
Okay, hi. I, I just wanted to point out that I wanted a single car garage to house my, my car, obviously. And where it's going to be built, there's 11 high.
Repeat.
No erosion on that side. Can you hear me? Hello?
We can see you, Ms. Samuelson, but you just need to pretend like I'm on the other side of a big room, all right? And you want to talk to me. Just got to talk a little louder.
You can't hear her now, right?
No, we can't.
Okay. Let's try one more time. Matt, can you hear everything on both lines?
Yes, I can. I can hear fine and I can hear Mr. Chairman as well.
But it's just not connecting.
No.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you anyway for listening, everybody. And what I wanted to point out was that there's an 11 foot bulkhead on the part where I'm going to be building the garage. And it's very well protected, so there's no flooding there and there's no erosion on that side.
I believe, Ms. Samuelson, did you hear that Mr. Russo mentioned that before?
I don't know if he said it was 11 foot bulkhead.
Yeah, well, he did, yeah. He mentioned that it was a bulkhead. I just want you to know that he did put that on the record, even though the commissioners can't hear.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay.
I can hear.
Are there, just at the end, we could, are there other comments in favor or against 1995, 1996 Fairfield Beach Road? Okay, nothing else. The hearing on number two, 1995, 1996 Fairfield Beach Road is now closed. Thank you, Attorney Russo.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, everybody.
Next item that we have is number three. 72 Fairfield Place, map 231, parcel 359. Petition of Kristin Stasko for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4 to reduce the side and rear line setbacks from seven feet and 30 feet, currently 4.5 feet and 40.4 feet. Proposing 4.4 feet and 29.3 feet. End section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage from 20% currently 23.3%. Proposing 20, 23.5%. Permission to construct a one-story sunroom over an existing deck with new landing and stairs. Premises a zone and is it Ms. Stasko or is it from Blackrock Builders?
Kurt Seehy from Blackrock Builders.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Seehy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the board. Yeah, I represent Blackrock Builders here in Fairfield and my client, Kristin Stasko at 72 Fairfield Place has had this deck since they moved into the home and it's rarely gotten use now. And with the, there's a stone patio adjacent to it, right in the rear center of the home. And referring to the land survey, which Land Survey Services recently did for my client. The setback that we're trying to get approval for is the rear deck itself coming square off the house would infringe by approximately five inches closer to the property line if it becomes a one-story unit. As far as the rear, the setback is 40 feet. That is to the home. The existing setback to the deck is the 29 feet, which we're proposing to, as I said, close in for a sunroom with electric thermostatic heat, kind of a three-season room. But I think we are applying for a variance because we're infringing by a few inches each way. And again, my client with her daughter is home from college now, I think studying. And the extra space, obviously due to the coronavirus in the home is a necessity now with not only this client, but some of my other clients in towns. So with what you have in front of you, the proposal, the drawing is pretty standard, clear forward construction. With a small patio that will exit off to the center of the rear of the property. So it won't be extending back towards the rear back that we're looking for. And again, I have photos enclosed which show the existing deck as it sits. And the one-story structure would be coming off of that with the gable roof tying in to the old porch that's on the side opposite the chimney of the home, as the photos will show. So that's basically it. I do have my client on the line also, Chrissy Stasko, Kristin Stasko. And if she is here and would like to speak on behalf. Of course, we have all the petitions, the neighbors have signed off. And so we're looking for approval for this. That's all I have to say. Is Christine.
Thank you, Mr. Seehy. Board has questions for you or Ms. Stasko. Board have any questions for the contractor or the owner? Okay, now I'll open this up to anyone that wishes to comment on this application either in favor or against. It's number three, 72 Fairfield Place. Anyone there?
No, just keep, you keep on your side.
I don't, I'm taking notes here. I can see them.
Do you want to say something?
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. No, he pretty much just covered everything. We just want to increase our space at home in that exact same spot. Because we need a little bit more room.
I didn't hear anyone.
Yeah.
In favor or against, so, and no questions? So we're going to close the hearing on 72 Fairfield Place. Thank you, Ms. Stasko. Thank you, Mr. Seehy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Matter that we have is number four. Daphne, you're sitting on this. Jane is recusing herself. Number four, 65 Fairmont Terrace, map three, parcel two, petition of John and Lynn Shavinsky for variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4 to reduce the rear line setback from 30 feet. Currently 38.8 feet, proposing 18.8 feet. Section 5.2.5, increase block coverage from 20% currently 21.9%, proposing 25.7%. Permission to construct an elevated rear deck premises a zone and I think the Shavinskis are presenting their own application. Yes, Mr. Shavinsky, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay? I guess that's a yes. I see some heads nodding. Thank you, everybody. Yeah, I'm here off camera with my wife Lynn to present our request for a variance as outlined by the chairman. We are looking to build a larger deck on the back of our house. It's about 20 by 20-foot deck. The, the background on why we're doing this is that we considered a, a surface-level patio, but I'll point out that in one of our pictures, I think everybody has the west-facing view, you can see that the property slopes from north to south. And a patio isn't really feasible because of the slope. It wouldn't be level. So we'd like to make this a deck. We have a deck currently, a much smaller one, and in the last year or so, it's felt even smaller, as you can imagine. Also, I'll add that a year and a half ago, my mother moved in with us. She's elderly and, you know, can't do stairs very well and the like, so in order for her to enjoy the outdoor space, a deck would be preferred over a patio. That's essentially it. The setback, oh, the setback property line. I, you'll see the petition in there from the various budding neighbors and the property line that we're, we'd be extending toward is one of the neighbors that signed off on the petition, so there was no objection there. That's all I have unless you have any questions.
I thank Mr. Shavinsky. The board have any questions for Mr. Shavinsky? No video on Jane. Jane, do you have any questions? Usually you wave at me.
Jane's not on this one.
I'm recusing myself from this.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
I'll ask one for Jane, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The, the deck itself, it looks like it's extending from the existing smaller deck to the new deck. Are you guys building the bridge or are you building the entirely new? I'm not sure I fully understand. The existing deck will be replaced in its existing form. It won't be enlarged. That smaller porch off the other small entry door will be replaced as the bigger deck will be on top of it, for want of a better description. Is that, I'm not sure I answered your question.
You did. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, having no questions. Is there anyone that has comment either for or against this application, number four, 235 Fairmont Terrace? Hearing none. We're going to close our hearing on number four, 235 Fairmont Terrace. Thank you, Mr. Shavinsky.
Thank you.
Sorry, Jane. I got nervous when I saw no video and I didn't know if you were trying to get my attention and then I wrote down Daphne sitting for you. Number five, 801 Post Road, map 141, parcel 20, petition of Beacon Hill Realty Holding LLC for a variance of zoning regulations, section 12.7.6.1 to reduce the side setback from one, one-tenth of a foot, currently 1.3 feet, proposing 1.5 feet. And section 12.7.2, 12.7.6.2 to reduce the street line setback from 25 feet, currently 20 feet, proposing 7.1 feet. And section 28.6.12 to reduce the required off-street parking spaces from 20 feet to 10 feet. Permission to establish a restaurant with covered outdoor seasonal dining premises, DCD Zone. And I think the agent, Mr. Gardner, are you presenting this?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Board. I'm going to turn on the screen because I think that'll be the easiest way to illustrate what we're trying to do here.
Jimmy, can you mute in the meantime?
Are you able to see my screen?
Not yet.
Okay, then I didn't do something right.
Sam, did you select the share bottom button on the bottom?
I did. And then it pulls up. Here, got it. How about now, everybody?
Shared now.
Perfect. Great. Thank you very much. So I'm on this, in this presentation with you and, and to speak with me if necessary is Bart Stanco, who is the property owner. He is the owner of Beacon Hill Realty Holding. Jordan Pochenas and Declan Maher, who are the operators. He's a co. John Pochenas is their attorney and I have Jim Zumo of Land Surveying Services who prepared the site plan. Okay, so what this site plan is illustrating is that this is a highly non-conforming site at the corner. Okay, so what this site plan is illustrating is that this is a highly non-conforming site at the corner of Post Road and South Benson Road. If they've former uh auto repair gas station site. We are reusing the existing building with uh additions. So in what you're seeing illustrated in this site plan, in gray is the uh existing footprint of the uh By the way, I am getting some background noise from someone who's not muted.
Terry, can you mute yourself, please?
I'm not connected.
Thank you. So to the left of the gray square is a blue square, which is the actual, that's an addition that will be enclosed and an extension of the existing uh building for the kitchen. And to the right in a in a outlined blue square towards South Benson is the covered porch. Also, I should point out next to to the left of the addition to the restaurant is a double-hatched blue square, and that actually is a walk-in uh cooler, which will be situated on a slab. The reason we're differentiating is because that that is not a permanent structure. That can go at any time, proposed as part of the restaurant footprint. So um in this design, you see that the the building itself totally faults the side yard setback. The the back of the building is uh one point three feet from the property line. And we have kept that line with the addition and the uh the walking cooler. Uh, the porch steps uh forward a little bit, but it also um faults the South Benson Road setback. Now, we are proposing to uh put planters in the driveway from South Benson because our parking plan is going to only utilize ingress and egress from the post road. And we're proposing uh ten spaces. So uh essentially, our ask is to uh allow the additions and the side porch, which fault uh side and and uh, I guess, front yard. This, one of the issues with this property is that it has two front yards because of South Benson and Post Road. And um and then propose ten parking spaces uh for the use of the restaurant. We also submitted um some letters to the uh, the chair uh from adjacent property owners uh who are both uh behind or I say behind, but it's actually a side yard. The property where they have uh offered to uh allow the use of their parking uh spaces for the use of the restaurant. Um, I also have uh sort of some illustrations. Can you see the picture in front of you? Good. This is, this is the way the auto repair uh building looks now. It's it's perfect for the Pizza Co. Uh, brand. I don't know if you uh know their other restaurant in Stratford, but it it uses uh a automobile service station as their uh brand and their theme. And this is what it would look like transformed into what they're proposing for the the restaurant. Going back to the site plan. The way the site is going to be used is that there will be a patio in front where they have outdoor seating like at picnic tables. And then they have the uh the covered seating over here, uh, which is, I guess, three-seasoned. But, you know, generally, they have found during uh the pandemic that uh having outdoor seating has really uh allowed them to continue to be a business in Stratford and their it's become a feature of of their uh you know, the restaurants. So they're they're looking to uh continue that at at Fairfield. Um, I also have some, just some basic drawings of of what it's all going to look like. Here's the view from this, from Post Road. This here is the view from South Benson. You'd see a porch that would just sort of copy the the end gable of the existing service station. The other side, which is where we have the walk-in cooler, that's going to be behind a fence. And we're just continuing the roof line similar to what the roof line is on the other side over this uh addition over here. This is the addition. And uh, that pretty much is my uh presentation. I'll take any questions and and if you want uh any of my team to speak, uh, I'm glad to talk about, have them uh present to you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gardner. If you could just remove the screen shares so everyone's up and see each other, that's be helpful. And does the board have any questions for Mr. Gardner or his team?
Stop sharing. Got it. There we go.
Yes, Jane, go ahead.
I have a question about the ten additional parking spaces that you need for outdoor use. Um, I see that there's a letter from the funeral home that says you can use it after our normal business hours. So what what is a funeral home normal business hours?
Um, I'm going to defer to uh, I guess I'll I'll either Declan or Jordan, do you want to take that response?
Mr. Mahar, we can't hear you. Still can't hear you.
Oh, I was going to ask you, Matt, if you could unmute. Declan, try again.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Not me? All right, thank you. Declan Mahar, six-nine-three Fairfield Beach Road, Emma Fairfield resident. Uh, the conversation with Dick Miller is, like funeral homes are, they're busy usually in the morning from, you know, nine to eleven.
If you could try one more time?
Uh, do you hear me now or no?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So the funeral home is busy from nine to eleven o'clock uh in the mornings of a funeral, and they're busy during wakes, and wakes are determined by people passing away. So there's no set schedule. The wakes are usually over by eight o'clock. Uh, and they start at four o'clock and, you know, we're open, we're noon to, you know, eleven o'clock in that timeframe. And they are not in everyday use. We also have a letter from the building directly next door as well, which has about uh eight to ten spots as well. So between those two buildings, we have well over the ten spots we're in need of.
So what happens um if those owners change of the adjacent properties? And you lose, you lose that.
That that, yes, but uh both properties are established businesses and ownerships of the buildings for, you know, going back twenty-something years, the the Miller Funeral Home has been there and uh, they have no plans to vacate that premise. And the other is owned by, the building's owned by Fuzzy Munson, who has owned that building for, you know, probably in excess of twenty-five years and has no plans to sell it.
And you only need those extra ten because you're offering outdoor seating? That's correct? If you just had only indoor seating, you would have enough parking?
I don't believe that to be true.
That is, you know, that we're required to have twelve spaces for the inside.
Okay, I'm looking, I'm looking at the parking table that's on your survey and it says indoor parking required ten, ten spaces.
Yeah.
Correct?
It was, you know, I have a markup from Matt on my submission where he changed those numbers. To twelve inside and eight outside. So he revised my calculation. Back break, Matt?
That is correct.
So if you were to not have outdoor seating, you still don't have enough parking because you need twelve property. Okay.
And that's why we we sought uh parking from adjacent property owners within I think it was five hundred square feet, uh, five hundred feet of of the restaurant. Also, it should be pointed out that there's there's parking even within that uh distance from the restaurant.
Is there on-street parking on the Post Road there? Or on on South Benson? Permitted? No, there's no. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jane. Any other questions? All right, hearing no other questions. Is there anyone that wants to comment on this particular application, eight zero one Post Road? Whether you're in favor or against uh on on the uh the WebEx video or the call-in, please let us know. Emma Lyon, wasn't there someone that said they needed to speak on this?
I think that was um Declan.
Declan, okay, all right. All right, we got it covered then. Okay, thank you. Um, since there's no one commenting either for or against, I'm going to be closing the hearing, eight oh one Post Road. Thank you, Mr. Mahar. Thank you, Mr. Garden Gardner for presenting and answering the questions.
Okay, thank you for your your attention.
Next item that we have uh is number six, two-eleven Old Spring Road. Petition of uh John Murray and Berkeley Murray for a variance of zoning regulations, section five point two point four point three, to reduce the setback from accessory structure exceeding fifteen feet in height from ten feet, currently three point six feet and four point two feet, proposing four point five feet and four point five feet. Section and section five point two point five, to increase lot coverage from twenty percent, currently twenty-two point four percent, proposing twenty-four percent. Uh, permission to construct a detached garage premises A zone. Attorney Fallon, I believe you're presenting this?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, well, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, for the record, I'm John Fallon. I'm an attorney here in Fairfield. I'm pleased to be representing Brian and Berkeley Murray. They are the owners of the property at two-eleven Old Spring Road. And they reside there with their two teenage daughters. As you may know from your inspection of the property, there is presently a garage located on the property that's in extremely poor condition. Uh, the floors cracked, there's no foundation, the wood is, shingles are are rotting. Uh, the the Murrays have always had a great um sense of the the historic characteristics and character of their home. Uh, the garage does not reflect or enhance uh that historic house where they live. And uh, it doesn't enhance the neighborhood as well. So the Murrays also want to address their needs with regard to the garage because it is uh only eighteen feet and a half, eighteen and a half feet deep, which really is unsuitable for parking uh most functional vehicles now. So overall, what this application is about is to replace um an existing unattractive, non-functional garage with something that will uh be not only functional for them, uh but also uh will complement their very lovely nineteen thirty-three Tudor-style home. Indeed, under the design of Meg Browning, Margaret Browning, uh, the pitch of the garage was done intentionally uh to mimic as much as possible the pitch of the house and so that it would have those characteristics of harmony. Uh, the other part of this application, which is important, and you've heard this on applications I brought to you in months, a few months ago on Penfield Road and other places, is that the entire concept, obviously, of working at home has become very pronounced in our society as we adapt to the COVID-required changes. That's certainly been true uh for Brian and Berkeley. Uh, they have both been required to work uh from their home and probably will be for the foreseeable future. In addition, their two teenage daughters have had to spend, as your children may have too, or grandchildren in my case, a substantial amount of time uh going to school remotely. The house where they live has three bedrooms and with two teenage girls, that's simply not enough space to allow the Berkeley, Brian and Berkeley to have a dedicated area for their employment obligations that involve phone calls, virtual meetings and the like. So the small space uh proposed above the garage will provide a small but important area uh for them to do that. And occasionally also the children uh to uh study remotely. In addition, uh, Brian and Berkeley and their children are always and have been very active. They belong to a gym. They were very active in a gym. And obviously, again, because of COVID, that utilization of gyms has been lost or seriously curtailed. So part of our proposal, and I just wanted to call it your attention, would be to include a shower in that uh upstairs small area above the uh garage because they would like to use it in addition as a family occasionally for workout and so on and so forth. In addition, with a family of four, including two teenage daughters, uh, the house has only one shower now. So this would be a very nice amenity. The one thing I'd like to point out to the board, so we're clearing it i- in light of a conversation in earlier in these proceedings and in others. In the Beach District, there's no allowance without a variance from you for any plumbing or electrical fee uh fixtures in any accessory structure. That's not the case uh generally with regard to accessory structures in residential zones. The residential zoning regulations require only that an accessory structure cannot have any quote "facilities" for cooking or sleeping. So there's no prohibition here uh of of having a bath that would include a shower. And indeed, there are many instances of accessory structures throughout Fairfield, Greenfield, Hill, others I've been involved in, that that have such. And clearly here, we're abiding by it because as you can see from the proposed plan, we're not suggesting any facilities for cooking or sleeping. There's no kitchen, there's no bed area. It's a small area that'll be used as a home office by the Murrays and 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 the shower. Having only one shower in their house will facilitate their using uh that new area sometimes for purposes of working out with themselves and or their children. Now, the existing garage is a presently a non-conforming structure. Uh, as you can see from the plans, um, it 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 the side yard requirements, it's only three point six feet from the side property lines and four-two, four point two feet from the rear property lines. In this case, the new garage will improve and reduce those non-conformities in that it is going to be four point five feet from both the side and the rear property line. The variances that we seek, as the call indicates, is uh to increase the allowable coverage from twenty-two point four percent to twenty-four percent. Uh, that increase in lot coverage is due solely to the modest expansion of the garage footprint in order to provide sufficient depth so that the vehicle can be safely parked in there. We're also seeking, as I said, the variance of section five point two point four point three. Although again, I would point out uh that we are actually reducing the currently existing setback non-conformities. Property is located in the residence A zone. It's a pre-existing and legally non-conforming lot with respect to both lot area and shape. As you know, the zone requires nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet. This lot, which was established for residential purposes prior to the adoption of the zoning regulations, has only seventy-five hundred square feet. And it also has a square of only sixty feet. So what does all that mean in the context of your statutory review of this application? As you know, Connecticut General Statute eight dash six requires As you know, Connecticut General Statute 8-6 requires you to make two findings. One, that is what is being proposed will not substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan, and that, two, there are facts in the circumstances of this property that establish a hardship basis as defined by our courts. With regard to the first part of the test, it's been held by our Supreme Court that if the use to be allowed by the variance is consistent with other uses in the area or constitutes a permitted use in the zone, then in fact, the first part of the test is met. Here, obviously, there's going to be no change in use. We're going to continue to use the property as a single-family residence as explicitly permitted in the zone. We're going to comply with all the other requirements of the regs, I would point out, including FAR. There is no variance sought for floor-area ratio here. As designed by Margaret Browning, and as I indicated before, I think the new garage is very attractive in design. It's going to harmonize with the existing Tudor home, and will have a very positive aesthetic impact on the property and the surrounding neighborhood. As I indicated in my material, the Murrays were going to and did in fact speak to their neighbors. I submitted a petition, two petitions, actually, and you should have those, and they will show that all the surrounding neighbors are aware of the application and support it. And that is, I think, also consistent with the first part of the statutory test. The hardship here is a, is a classic one. It arises from the fact that the lot in question is a valid and legally protected non-conforming lot as it relates to both lot area and shape. As I said, it's undersized at 750 square feet, and our Connecticut Supreme Court has recognized that the impact of current zoning regulations on such legally protected non-conforming lots does in fact establish hardship for purposes of granting variances with regard to coverage and setback. Even with the non-conformity of the lot, which is substantial, almost 2,000 square feet, we're only seeking an increase in coverage of 1.6%. So I think both parts of the statutory test under 8-6, we hope you'll find have been satisfied here. The other factor which is important is there is case law, which I cite at page five in my material, where it is found by the Connecticut Supreme and appellate courts that if a variance will actually reduce existing non-conformities, that provides a proper independent legal basis for granting a variance. And as I've said before, that's clearly the case here, where we are reducing the, the current side yard non-conformity of the existing rather dilapidated and unfunctional structure. So in conclusion, Brian and Berkeley are seeking approval to construct a much-needed, structurally sound, and aesthetically attractive garage that will complement their home and the character of the neighborhood. They're excited about it. Their neighbors are excited about it. The modest area of space which we propose above the garage will allow the family to address their space needs as it relates to home, office, work, and from time to time, remote schoolwork. It will also provide them a, a small exercise area which the entire family can use during this very difficult period in lieu of their prior gym activities, gymnasium activities. From a legal perspective, I think we meet the standards established by Connecticut General Statutes 8-6. There's not going to be any adverse impact here to the comprehensive plan, and the pre-existing non-conforming legal status of the lot, in accordance with our case law, does provide a proper basis for the granting of the coverage and setback variances we request. Plus, there's the independence basis based upon the reduction of an existing non-conformity that will result from this application. So we'd be pleased to answer any questions that you might have. We hope you'll favorably consider this application. The Murrays love their home. It's a uniquely beautiful and historic home, and I think the garage will add to that character and ambiance. We're pleased to answer any questions, and we thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. Does the board have any questions for Attorney Fallon or the Murrays themselves? Any questions? Seeing no questions, hearing no questions. Well, now open this up to the call-in. Is there anyone that wishes to speak either in favor or against number six, 211 Old Spring Road? Please identify yourself, give us your name. All right, hearing none. I'm going to close the hearing on 211 Old Spring Road. Thank you, Attorney Fallon.
Thank you.
Next item that we have is number seven. 56 Shoreham Terrace, map 130, parcel 188, petition of Ronald Freetson for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the sum of two sideline setbacks from 20 feet, 25 feet, currently 19.4 feet, proposing 19.4 feet, and section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage from 3%, currently 26%, proposing 26.9%. Permission to construct second-floor addition premises A-zone. Mr. Freetson, you're presenting this, correct?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Okay, and Lee Overland is my architect, is going to be available if we need him. There's two separate sections here. The first is, there's a overhang of the back about 18 inches, goes over the back deck, and we did that to bring the front of the house into conformity. And also, just artistically, it gives the front of the house an interesting flow. It's a, what I would call a minimal or de minimis overhang. It's 18 inches. It's on the second floor. There's plenty of setback there. The hardship, of course, is the size and shape of the lot. It's a pre-existing non-conforming. So that, the one, and it speaks to itself. I mean, it's hardly a large amount. It doesn't affect anybody. Provides a little bit of sun shade for the people back there who are on the roof, on the deck, on the, on the ground, on the ground, side deck. And to give everybody a little bit of a heads up, this is the house that had the fire back in June of last year. The way the sun comes up there, we, the fire was started by some lunch trash. That was literally a paper bag that had some grease that came out of some french fries, and the sun reflected off the aluminum foil to start the fire. And that's the best guess that the two fire inspectors came up with. So it gets very, very hot back there. So having that little bit of an overhang helps protect everything. As I say, it's a de minimis amount. The second question is the question of the south-facing center section. Now, the south-facing center section, the original roof extended out, non-conforming, towards the southern neighbor. By creating the decks, what we did is kept the non-conformity basically exactly the same. We took the amount of overhang where the decks, where the decks are currently located, and we moved that up towards the center in order to make those two bedrooms have a, like modern, normal legal ceilings, as opposed to the old cake-type ceilings where they're slanted at the ends. It doesn't affect the total height of the building because the center area, we're still well within code. All it does is we took one bit of non-conforming triangles and flipped them up, so our total non-conforming is still actually slightly less than it was, except for the overhang in the back. But it didn't effectively change the amount of non-conforming from the original section. Do you have any questions? I'm not hearing you. Hang on. I can't hear anybody.
That's my fault. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Freetson? I didn't unmute myself. All right, having no questions. Mr. Freetson, there were two letters and emails that came in that have comments in opposition to the application. So what I'm suggesting is let me first see if those same people are here to...
Sure, and I can...
And then you comment afterwards regardless. You can comment as to their, what they speak to or what they put in the emails. That way we can, you know...
Absolutely.
Cover both if, if it happens that way.
No problem.
I'm opening this up on 56 Shoreham Terrace for anyone that has any comments either for or against this particular application. And I do already have emails from Janine White and a Henri Radshaw, and those people were their neighbors next to, next to this particular house or near this house. So anyone on the call-in that wants to speak to this? Anyone there, Matt?
There was somebody very faintly.
Hello, if you're trying to speak on this item for 56 Shoreham Terrace, if you could please speak up? Please? Was there somebody who wanted to speak on 56 Shoreham Terrace?
Okay. I guess not.
Okay.
Well, that's what you're going to be addressing. There is emails of concerns from Janine White, who lives at 66 Shoreham Terrace, and then there was concerns, which we, the board has all received, of Henri Radshaw, who lives at 4th Village Drive. Can you address, have you seen those, sir?
I have, and I can address those.
Perfect. Do so, please.
Okay, as far as Henri Radshaw's, hang on, let me turn this volume down, I'm getting reverb. As far as Henri Radshaw's, the height's not going to change. The height is conforming. The only issue on the height is actually what does have any real effect to her, which is the south-facing section in the middle of the two decks. That section where the roof pitch for the area of south-facing length equal to the width of the decks, which is about four and a half feet by memory, comes out square. If we angled that, then it's totally conforming. But we just lose height in the bedroom. It doesn't affect the height. The house is totally conforming as far as all the height goes. It houses a modern house. I mean, a lot of the homes on that street are old. As I'm sure you're aware, my architect Lee is building a modern house at the bottom of the street. There's a few other homes on the street which are, I want to say, 10, 15 years modernized. It's a modern, nice house that's going to improve the values on the street, addressing that set question. And so there's really, I mean, her point about height, it's conforming. I mean, basically that's it, except for those two little tiny sections, and effectively, that's just a swap in non-conformity. We took a, a non-conformity where the decks are, and by putting the decks in, we made, we took that non-conforming area, and we moved it up to make those bedrooms normal, rather than the old Cape 1950s, you know, slanted roofs. As far as your privacy area on the decks, and forgive me, I've done zoning in Westport for many, many years. I don't know Fairfield regulations as well as I know Westport's. So if this is not permissible, we could do this as two steps. I would be agreeable to amend this, if it can be done at this time, where instead of having the decks there, we simply brought the, we went back, we'd effectively be, now in this case, we would be increasing the non-conformity to simply replace the decks with part of the regular house. We put the decks in there because our original thought was that made it that side completely conforming, and only after we filed the application did that bring up the point, well, it's kind of a gray area because the cubic footage of non-conforming increased, even though the square footage did not increase. Because that's kind of where we put the decks in there. I would be just as happy if you can make as a condition to remove the decks and give permission for those additional areas to just be part of the internal walls. Now, I don't know if Fairfield zoning regulations would let me do that.
No, we're ready to change something to increase and change the variances. None of our conditions can change or allow for increase in any of this.
I would accept this as an approval. I'd accept approval for the plan as-is, without the decks, that area just to remain plain, with the understanding that I could come back at a, at a later date to change the decks and, and put them in, and for a separate variance request, or a separate approval. I'm not sure what the requirements would be. In other words, if they want to bring the decks, I'll take the approval without the decks and come back and argue for them later. And that's pretty much what I'm coming.
I understand, and I appreciate that, Mr. Freetson, but this is not let's make a deal.
Okay.
It's your, your application is looked at on its face, and we approve it or we don't approve it with the comments, and I can't have a condition which reserves you a right to, you could file, you could file any variance you want.
Okay.
Not going to have any condition that...
All right, well...
...afford to say, you know, that we have to have to entertain it, or have them appear that it has to be entertained.
All right.
Yeah, that, that, we don't, no, no such condition.
Okay, so, all right. So, I mean, basically, obviously, I'd like to see the proof of what it is. I think the decks looking out over the water would be amazing. The, the reality is, you know, that the house is, the house and, and bring it, you know, probably its value, which is only good for the house values of everybody else on the street. I guess that's it. Are there any other questions?
We, they didn't, we, we didn't have any questions. It went on to that, but no, I, trust me, I appreciate you trying to work, work through it and come up with and create it, but it's just not something that we can...
I, I just, I just don't know. Different towns, different regulations. I don't know what's possible, what's not possible. But the, all right, well, if there's no other...
Okay, you addressed, you addressed the comments from Miss, from White and from Shaw. I appreciate that. And there were no questions, so we're going to close the hearing on 56 Shoreham Terrace. Thank you, Mr. Freetson.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Yep, and we need to take a five-minute recess to allow use of facilities. So let's entertain, please forgive the chairman for that. So take a five-minute recess. We'll be back, back on at 4:44. Don't sign off. Just mute yourself and close your video or leave your video on, but just don't sign off.
Mr. Chairman, have, have we already reviewed item 13?
No.
Oh, so we're taking a break?
We're taking a break between seven and eight.
Okay, just making, okay.
Yep.
Understand, thank you.
Okay, this is Kevin Coyne again. Are we ready to resume? Jane, are you there? There you go.
Excuse me. Kevin, may I have permission to speak for a second? It's Ron Freetson from 56 Shoreham Terrace. I don't know if the rules permit or don't permit, but just posted a chat. I don't know if people can see it or not. There's a piece of information that's in what we already provided that I don't realize I forgot to mention, which is on that linear, on that south side of the house, we reduced non-conformity from 28 linear feet to only 17 linear feet. So effectively, it does reduce, the plan does reduce one of the non-conformities.
We, we understood that from the plans.
Okay, guys, I was unsure. You know, I'm not at all the check, so I get a little confused.
That's why we have an architect on the board to help us with it.
Thank you.
So what we're going to do is go on to number eight, 40 Quincy Street, map 139. 40 Quincy Street, map 139, parcel 177. Petition of Patrick and Kelsey Moran for variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line setback on a corner lot coverage from 30 feet, currently 23.5 feet, proposing 28.6 feet. And section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage to 20%, currently 23.4%, proposing 25.8%. Permission to construct an addition and front, side, and rear porches and to lift the dwelling to be FEMA compliant. A zone, I think, Mr. Chase, you're presenting this?
Yes, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Great. Gary Chase, I'm with Christian Ray Studio, architecture firm here in Fairfield, representing our clients, Patrick and Kelsey. We've been hired to design an addition for them to get some additional living space in their home that consists of, on the ground floor, a mudroom, which they don't currently have, as well as an expansion of their existing kitchen. On the second floor of that addition will be a added master suite. Currently, there are two bedrooms, three bedrooms on the second floor that share essentially one bathroom and one very undersized bathroom. So, we are looking to improve that condition. As it sits, the house is currently over the allowable coverage at 23.4%. As you noted, after the proposed work, will be sitting at 25.8% with the improvements. The home will also need to be brought into compliance, FEMA compliance. It is currently below the required elevation, so part of our work will be raising the house about two and a half feet to bring that into compliance. The proposed work otherwise conforms to all the setbacks, building height, maximum floor area. So, we're not asking for anything additional with that work. The design is really meant to be an extension of the existing home, so it follows the same kind of roof pitch and height. So, they'll actually be slightly lower in building height, as you'll see on the elevations. And we are also proposing a covered porch on the corner of Quincy and Penfield, which is as of right, a one-story unenclosed porch. And we feel that will add to the character of the home, be a nice addition for the family to use that part of the property, which is currently underutilized. You should have signed petitions from all the immediate abutters. So, we have support on the neighbor front. And in conclusion, I think we have an addition that's going to get our clients kind of what they're looking for from a function standpoint. Raising the house to be FEMA compliant is, I think, a win-win for everyone. And I think improving the character of, of the home and the neighborhood with, with what we're posing all make this hopefully a positive application. And we hope to seek your approval. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Does the board have questions? See, Jane has her hand up. Alright, go ahead Jane.
Hi. I'm confused on the, the height of the building. You're lifting the house up, but I'm looking at the existing condition height versus the proposed height, and it looks like the proposed height is lower.
Yeah, it's, it's possible that, let me see here. 23.3.
And it's going down?
It's possible that was not updated. The 22.8 is an accurate number. I have verified that with Land Surveying Services. So, which is well under our allowable building height, obviously, but it could be that that was not updated. I don't know if Jimmy is on the call still. He might be. If you, if you really want to direct that question towards him, we can. But I do know that I verified the proposed numbers with Land Surveying Services and those are accurate.
Okay, and then my other question is, can you just state what the hardship is?
Well, the hardship is, you know, we do have a non-conforming lot. We are slightly under our required setback on the Penfield roadside at 29.7. And the house being non FEMA compliant, we are going to need to add steps to get up to the new elevation required, which is kind of bringing our coverage into play. So, yeah, really, the, the non-compliance from a FEMA perspect, perspective.
Okay. Thank you, that's, that's it.
You're welcome.
Mr. Zumo has his hand up. Can't hear him always.
You're muted.
Can't hear you, Mrs. Getting a lot of feedback from your...
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you Jimmy.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Yeah, alright. So, in regards to the height of the building, again, James Zumo, Land Surveying Services, 1275 Post Road. In regards to the height of the building, the, the existing height is from the average grade. The proposed height is taking into account for the credit they get for, between the floodplain and the average grade. So, the house will be taller, but I, I should have adjusted the table to show it with taking the credit in the existing conditions, but it is going to be all within conforming of the, of the height standards with the planning and zoning.
Okay, thank you, that explains it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zumo.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Chase? Alright, hearing no other questions. Is there anyone on call in for number eight, 40 Quincy Street, that has comment either for or against this application? Alright, hearing none, no comments either for or against. I'm going to close the hearing on 40 Quincy Street. Thank you, Mr. Chase, thank you for answering that question, Mr. Zumo, we appreciate that. The next item. Number nine. 1721 Mill Plain Road, map 147, parcel 268. Petition of Eric Cremheller for variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the sideline setback from seven feet, currently 3.5 feet, proposing 3.5 feet. Permission to construct a second floor addition, premises A zone. Mr. Chase, this is you again, correct?
This is me again. For the record, Gary Chase, Christian Ray Studio, representing our clients, Eric and Lauren Cremheller. We were hired to design an addition for them, which consists primarily of a second floor master suite addition. Currently, there are two plus one very small bedroom on the second floor, all sharing one bathroom. So, they would like to create a little bit of a proper master suite up there. To do so, we are building directly over top of an existing one-story portion of the home. From a feasibility standpoint, this, we decided was the best approach. Unfortunately, that existing corner of the house is only three and a half feet off the side property line versus the seven feet required. So, this is what we're dealing with as an existing condition. It's why we're requesting this variance. We do have neighbor support from that neighbor directly next door at 1745. You should have that petition signed. And additionally, all the, all the proposed work will otherwise conform to building height and floor area requirements. And again, the design of the home is very straightforward, meant to kind of complement, complement the existing home, very straightforward in nature. So, we hope that this does not create any, any additional kind of non-conformance, understanding we are very tight to that side property line, but we're trying to respect the bulk of the home, certainly not creating anything higher than what's already existing in the main part of the house there. So, we're, we're seeking your approval on this, on this application. And I will answer any questions you might have on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Does the board have any questions on 1721 Mill Plain? Alright, no questions. Open this up to call in. Does anyone have any comment on 1721 Mill Plain Road, either for or against? Please give us your name. Okay, no comments. One way or the other, I'm going to close the hearing on 1721 Mill Plain Road. Thank you again, Mr. Chase.
Thank you guys.
Next item is number 10. 1610 Melville Avenue, map 46, parcel 158. Petition of Michelle and Amanda O'Nello for variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the sideline setback from 15 feet to 10 feet, currently 3.4 feet, proposing 6.1 feet and 2.8 feet to AC condensers. And section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage and total floor area from 15% and 30%. Currently, 15.7% and 21%, proposing 24% and 34.4%. Permission to construct a rear addition, rear addition with deck and AC condenser premises, R3 zone. This woman, O'Nello, are you presenting?
We can't hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, who's...
Can you, anyone? Can you hear me? There's a lot of feedback, go for it. Alright, well, I'll go for it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My name is Ted Levis. I am a local architect and I reside at 288 Stratfield Road. I will be speaking on behalf of the proposed renovation at 1610 Melville Avenue. We are requesting relief for the following three items. Property setback, lot coverage, and floor area ratio. My clients are a married couple with two young daughters. They live in the house, they've been living in the house for 11 years. They love the closeness and connection they have created with their neighbors. It is an amazing neighborhood, that Melville place. So, they have numerous kids playing in the street and their children have peers that are... It's just like a really great neighborhood, I guess, is really what I'm saying. So, when it came to determine whether they were going to buy or remodel, they just felt that the neighborhood engagement was too much to give up. But the, the reality of their four users on one outdated bathroom was the reason that I'm here and that's the reason why I'm talking to you today. The original home was built in 1922 and is an existing non-conforming structure. In fact, the adjacent neighbors and most of the properties on the east side of Melville Avenue are all now existing non-conforming lots. These lots have more characteristics of a residential zone A than the R3 that they're zoned in. In the design, we are proposing to expand the building footprint and add just over 1,000 square feet. This will consist of a new kitchen, powder room, and living room on the main floor. A new master suite laundry and child's bathroom on the second floor. And in the lower level, we're planning to separate the utility space and create a new kids' play area and bathroom. The existing basement. We are also proposing to rebuild the existing deck, add some additional site improvements, various plantings. We are maintaining the current height and using the existing ridge height and using that to continuation of the remodel. My homeowner has, we've... Has kind of, excuse me. The feedback is crazy, sorry. But, um, we have reached out to all our neighbors and they are in approval. So, in conclusion, on the, on the existing limitations on our undersized lot and existing structure, we requesting relief from the board to allow us to proceed with our proposed renovation. If I, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. I also have my homeowner, who is also on the call.
Yep, I see that. Thank you, Mr. Levis. Then, does the board have any questions for Mr. Levis, architect on this, or the owner? Okay, seeing no questions. Is there anyone on call in or anyone on this matter that wishes to speak either in favor or against the application? Please provide your name. Anyone there? Okay, we're hearing none, okay. I'm going to close the hearing on 1610 Melville Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Levis. Thank you for being on.
Thank you.
Next item is number 11. That is 399 South Benson Road, map 139, parcel 218. Petition of Lauren and John Eber for variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line setback on a corner lot from 30 feet, currently 11.1 feet, proposing 10.5 feet. Permission to remove an existing deck and rebuild a new deck in one-story addition. Premises A zone, I believe the owners are on and you're presenting your application.
Hi, I'm Lauren Ebers, my husband John Eber. We live at 399 South Benson. We are looking to remove a poorly constructed mudroom addition on the back of our house.
A lot of, getting a lot of feedback. You're, when you're on the phone and when you're on that, it picks up both and it just reverberates. So, is there a way to do one or the other? We can't hear you, Lauren.
I'm not sure what to do.
I can hear you now.
You can hear me now, okay.
Yep, just, just try to stay, move, talk like that. Okay, good, go.
Okay. Okay, so, we are looking to remove a poorly constructed mudroom addition on the back of our house. We will also be removing a deck and adding a small porch. The deck will not be rebuilt. Our hardship is that our house was built in 1904 before the zoning laws and we have a non-conforming lot. We have signatures from all of our adjoining neighbors. And I also have pictures of the structure. If you wanted to see, I can share my screen.
That's great, yes, please do so.
Okay, so, the photo on the left is our front porch and we are looking to mimic that character. We'll, we'll be doing a metal roof, columns, and the siding will match the existing, the rest of the house, like our front porch. The photo on the right is the mudroom addition. As you can see, it very much looks like an addition, so that is the area we are looking to address.
Just so you know, I only see one photo and it appears to be the photo that's the back. I'm not seeing another photo.
How do I do that? Okay. Stop sharing. Okay. I think I can do this now. Stop sharing. Okay. I think I can do this now. Oh. Nope, sorry.
Now, we just saw a front deck photo. That was, you meant we were describing it for?
Yeah, so that's, that's the photo of our front porch. There, okay. There, that's the back. Can you see that?
Yes. We see the back and we saw, we had a porch and you're trying to mirror it be on the back the same as the front. Is that accurate?
That's accurate, yes.
Okay. If you're done with the screen share, please remove that. Okay. Anything, anything else you want to say or are you ready for questions possibly?
Nothing more we want to say.
All right, does the board have any questions for the Abbers? All right. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on this application either for or against? And this is 399 South Benson Road. Hearing, no comments, one way or the other. We're going to close the hearing on 399 South Benson Road. Thank you very much, Mr. Abber.
Thank you.
Going to go on to number 12. That's 320 Lockwood Road, map 47. Parcel 4, petitionist Stephen Jennifer Forenste for variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage from 15%, currently 15.2%, proposing 18%. Permission to construct a deck and handicap ramp premises R3 zone. I think the owner, I think that's someone you want, you're going to be presenting this? Yes, sir, go ahead. Unmute though. Unmute yourself. Stephen, you got to hit unmute.
Okay.
There we go. Now start.
That's that. Okay, Stephen Jennifer Forenste here. That's that. Okay, and that's that.
Good.
Good. Okay, Stephen Jennifer Forenste here. What we would like to do is to construct a deck next to an existing sunroom that will provide a second mode of egress for my wife who is disabled.
We're actually taking, we would like to take down the sunroom.
So we are proposing to demolish the existing sunroom and construct a new one on the exact same footprint, but at the same level as the rest of the house. Existing sunroom is actually several inches lower than the rest of the house, the floor is. This will provide my wife with a second method of egress, second mode of egress to get out to the backyard essentially unassisted, which she's been unable to do for the entire time we've lived here. We've been in this house for 15 years.
With the new storms that are happening, that are getting more and more frightening. We had a tree come down in the front which blocked my only exit. So when we started this plan, it was just to find a rear exit, however, then the pandemic hit and we lost all nurse and aid assistants and realized that if we could just make a little bit of manipulation in the kitchen and turn the existing level and become a laundry area that I could actually do some things for myself, because right now my husband is the only one taking care of me and it's gotten a little rough. So I think the reason that we have the trouble is because our lot size is...
Yeah, we're already over the, you know, the maximum lot footprint for this lot size. It's also, this lot is, is well below the minimum lots, I think, for this, for this zone.
And we're on a corner, which I guess...
That gives us two front yards, essentially. We're at the corner of Lockwood and Bailey. If you go back, I think 10 years, the last time we applied for a variance was to put in a generator. And that was, that was after, I think, Hurricane Irene.
We've gotten the neighbors surrounding us to sign off happily. And is there any other information?
Yeah, the generator will remain, obviously, but where the deck will be constructed is over a buried propane tank which is going to be drained and removed and the ground filled in.
Generator's going to the gas line.
Yeah, the generator will now be converted to, to natural gas, which wasn't available when we first installed it.
Right. Any questions for the Forenste's? Seeing no questions. Is there anyone on call in that wants to speak to this application? This is 320 Lockwood Road. All right. No one, no one speaking or commenting on it, so now I'm going to close the hearing on 320 Lockwood Road. Thank you both.
Thanks very much.
Okay, our last item on this agenda is number 13, 10 Overhill Road, map 231, parcel 360. Petition of Elizabeth and Devon Santa for variance of zoning regulations. Section 5.2.4 to reduce the street and rear property line setbacks from 30 feet and 30 feet, currently 30.4 feet and 25.2 feet. Proposing 28.4 feet and 20.8 feet. Section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage from 20%, currently 16%. Proposing 23% permission to construct a one-story addition premises A zone. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, thank you and thank you commissioners. Can, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Devon Santa. I'm here representing myself and my wife. We reside at 10 Overhill Road and have for the last seven years. Our current house, we're, we're outgrowing a bit. We have two daughters, one's about to enter high school and another one about to enter middle school. We have no intentions of going anywhere, so we're looking to have a house that can grow with us a bit. So our proposal is to add a master bedroom and another bathroom upstairs and convert one of our upstairs bedrooms to an office to address the, the work from home situation that we're in currently. That'll make the house livable for, for our family for the, for the foreseeable future and certainly in character and keeping with the neighborhood. We've reviewed the plans and surveys with both of our budding neighbors and our across the street neighbor and they've signed the petition which was incorporated with our application. In order to accomplish what we'd like to accomplish, we currently are on a non-conforming lot on, for lot size and we do require three, three waivers. The first waiver is a street line setback-ish matter where we would be encroaching a bit into that setback. The second is a rear line setback, which we currently are pre-existing non-conforming, but we've been encroaching further into that, that setback with the proposed addition. And finally, our lot coverage would be 23% above the 20% per our zone. Again, as, as stated, we do believe this is in keeping with the neighborhood and that the hardships of, of both the lot area, the pre-existing non-conforming lot area, pre-existing non-conformity on the, on the rear setbacks, as well as being on a corner lot, make this worthy of consideration of your group for a waiver. So with that, that's, that's my presentation. I think any, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Santa. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Santa on the application? Go ahead. Yes, Jane.
Quick question. So there's an existing shed in the back corner?
That's correct.
But that's, you're going to leave it there?
We would, yes.
And then, this is not a zoning question, but I'm just curious, you're taking down two huge, beautiful, mature trees.
Yes, and that's been lingering over our heads as well, but there's a factor on that twofold. One, we bought the house seven years ago. Our, doing our due diligence, the arborist we hired said those trees need to come down because they're dying. Branches have been falling off, off of them with regularity. It is, it is a bit unnerving. And the house that we actually lived in, in Stratford prior to moving to Fairfield, we had two mature trees fall down in two separate storms. One fell on our house with our newborn daughter. So I'm appreciative of, of the trees and of the growth, though I'm also respectful of them from a safety perspective. Our neighbor is also aware of that concern and that has been asking us to consider taking these trees down through this time and with, knowing this, we have been safety pruning them each year and we still get dead growth coming down.
Thank you.
So, but thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, having no other questions, open this up to Colin. Is there anyone that has a comment either for or against this application? This is 10 Overhill Road. Okay, I have no comments. I'm going to close the hearing on 10 Overhill Road.
Thank you, commissioners.
The middle, I hope we can go straight in. Is the board ready to go straight into working session?
Absolutely.
All right, I'd like everyone else to make sure you're muted, just so we can go through our voting in an efficient manner. We can all hear each other without any feedback. So gonna go through our agenda. First item listed was number 11. That's continuing continued to form one, 2021, April 1. A second continued docket item is number 10. That's continued to our March and that's 275 North Cedar Road. Our first one for business is on the general docket, number one, 2713 Reading Road. It's a petition of, for Agina Lito and Ms. Tierney presented this to construct an addition. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion?
Seemed to me to be a reasonable application.
The, the issue I brought up, I realize it has, it's not in a FEMA zone, but out of curiosity, Matt, how much of an existing structure has to remain to be considered an existing structure that you're going to add to? I mean, if, if, if someone just leaves like one corner of one piece, does that, is that an, like...
Well, technically, no, but the, you know, part of the reason that they're in front of you today is because of, you know, the, the structure that they're working on is
Right.
within the step back, so.
Right, so I'm asking a hypothetical.
Yeah, well, an hypothetical, I, I, you know, take each one independent of the next, so if it, it winds up being more of a permit cost factor than it does in regard to whether they're allowed to leave a wall or not allowed to leave a wall. If it's a conforming lot, you know, I don't necessarily have an issue if they leave one wall. I mean, I don't know what purpose that actually serves. But if it's a non-conforming lot and they're trying to leave a wall that is the portion that's in the non-conforming section, that it doesn't work. I would send them to your commission.
Thank you.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
All right, let's vote. I'm taking the order that's on my screen. I'm going to retain the order moving forward. Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie? Terry?
Yes.
And I say yes? That passes, number two. 1995, 1996, Road, petition, Samson, attorney Russo presented the application. It's for the detached garage to put it down to do it and to have some living space, usable space above, above it. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Sir, a second?
Second.
Katie? Discussion?
This is, this is like so many others.
I have a question. I'm trying to clarify. With, with regard to the previous variance in 2010, it looked to me on the floor plan just was a garage. It's a garage with a living space on it, on, on the, on the survey. So the original, was the original variance just for a garage, not a garage with living space?
I think that there was, but not the, not two floors. It was a garage with a regular space above it. It was a long time ago. I was on the board. I don't remember far back, but...
The survey just says garage.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, well, this is a garage with living space, you know, just like the, the Murray's survey, it says garage, but it has space above it. I seem to, I, I seem to recall, I, I do recall a lot of, usually, I haven't, I don't think I've ever seen an, an application for these garages on the Pine Creek since my time. It didn't have something above it, you know, like was storage and office or something. Usually there's something there. Yep.
So lost.
There was, the variance did include living space on the second floor back in 2010. It was an office, I believe.
I have a question then, Matt. So like the definitions in the zoning regs, habitable space and living space are one in the same?
I don't know, nobody cares.
But I can't, you know, in a detached structure, I would not allow cooking facilities or sleeping quarters because that would constitute a dwelling. So whether it's habitable or living, essentially it's the same. But it wouldn't be a dwelling.
So that's the distinction?
Yes, cooking and sleeping are the distinction between it.
Okay, and then in the future, because if that new regulation to permit more accessory dwellings, will this be a candidate for that new regulation?
No, no, nope.
Okay. Because it's too small?
Oh, because it's the only area that's in the, it's in the two acre district that they're proposing that.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, thanks.
Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie? Terry? I say yes? Number three, 72 Fairfield Place, petition of Kristen Tascow. And Mr. C, he presented the application for her to construct a sunroom over existing deck. Permission to approve?
So moved.
Who was that? Brian?
Brian.
Wasn't looking up. I didn't see. Is there a second?
You still have to look up?
I'll, I'll second.
Sometimes Terry thinks one end, so I just got to, you know, make sure.
I almost said it, Mr. Terry.
I knew you were thinking, I could feel it. All right, let's have a discussion on the Fairfield Place, Ms. Tascow.
It's right, you know, it's just interesting, it's right next door to another property that's asking for a variance today. So if both are approved, there's going to be a lot of construction work happening.
Here's some equipment.
Been a lot of visions on that street anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, let's bring it to Brian.
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry? I say yes. Number four, Jane, you're recusing. Daphne, you're in on this one. You're going to be replacing her in order of voting. Number four, 235 Fairmont Harris. Petition of the Shavinsky's is to construct elevated rear deck. Entertain a motion to approve. They presented their own application.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Sir, a second? Second, Daphne, do you second?
I did.
Daphne, thank you. Discussion?
It seems reasonable.
If they were building the whole new thing or they were doing the bridge of it, but from the looks of it, it's just connecting it, making it more usable space.
Yeah, yeah, connecting, connecting the decks, making it fit for the deck. All right, bring it to Brian.
Yes.
Daphne?
Yes.
Yes.
Katie? Terry? I say yes. All right, Daphne, you can hang up, or you can stay. It's up to you. Much jumping in on one. Number five, 801 Post Road, it's Beacon Hill Realty Holding, it's petition. Carter presented that for the Pizza Co.
Yeah, I like that part.
Facility. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Jane, second.
Thank you, Jane. All right, discussion?
Does this gonna ultimately have to go to P and Z because it's a change of use?
That is correct.
Commercial.
So it's gonna become a restaurant? Just a regular restaurant use?
Pizza restaurant, yes.
So when the pizza restaurant, you know, is not successful, if it's not successful, any restaurant can move in there, correct?
Correct.
Without changing the floor plan yet.
And, so I'm just putting it there hypothetically, if a new owner comes in and they don't have the same arrangement with the funeral home and fuzzy monsoon about parking, then how do you enforce the variance, the parking variance?
Well, it's, it's enforcing itself, because there's only 10, 10 spots, so the variance is there to use 10 spots for that same square footage. Obviously, they change square footage, that's gonna change the parking requirement. I, it's, some of these, in my opinion, at least, they're almost self-enforcing. If it's, if it's not gonna work, the business is gonna fail.
Yeah.
We're not gonna have, and we're gonna be vacant. You know, we, we've had this discussion on other, various different variances for the different uses. And, you know, where people wanted to change the use, and we've had a lot of discussion, like, well, it seems reasonable to allow this change, and it increases the parking requirement. But if it's not going to interfere, if it's gonna, if it's gonna survive, it's gonna survive. They can't park there. The phase is gonna fail. You know, do I look at it, this is kind of an eyesore, you know, dilapidated old service station?
Right.
You know, it looks like, it looks like it could work. You know, my opinion, it spans a little bit of the downtown, we're moving it up a little bit upwards towards, you know.
But half of the required parking is not on their property, and it relies on the, you know, permission by other landlords who could revoke the permission. So how do you, how can you, how can you compel the other property owners to offer up the parking in order for the variance to exist?
We can't, and the owner's gotta rely on getting parking somewhere else. Close enough to walk safely.
Yeah, there's nothing there.
Go pick a commercial.
I don't, I still, I don't understand legally how you can compel some, another owner to provide parking.
We can.
We can.
Yeah, but then how do you give, but then how do you give a variance that says the other parking is on somebody else's property?
I'm lenient because we don't think, you know, they'll be able to do that. We don't think they're gonna need more than 10 spaces.
Yeah.
I don't think the approvals can just go upon the use of other space. I think they're being nice, and they're offering the space, but I don't think it's a condition, I didn't read it as a condition of the approval.
No, can't.
I would be approving it independently of it.
Well, you can't park on the street. I'm just imagining a summer night, there's a wake going on. You can't park there. You can't park on the street. Where are those other 10 cars gonna park? I mean, I just, okay.
I understand. I mean, they gotta find somewhere else. It's whether, it's reasonable for this spot.
Okay.
I mean, there's a lot of parking at Pops.
Right, so let me, so just so I understand, so the variance, part of the variance is not saying that they can park at the funeral home or whatever. All it says is, the variance is, you don't have to provide the 10 spots that are on your property, and that's it.
Yeah, they present that, just like all of the people that present. I mean, it's a good idea to present to show us why we should be lenient, that they've made arrangements for parking.
Okay.
You know, like, like we had downtown where, you know, how many countless applications from attorneys Fallon and Fitzpatrick, where they give us the letters and.
Right, but it's not, okay, but that's, that's not, the variance does not include you can park at the funeral home?
No, no.
Okay, that's, I wanna make sure.
Funeral home could really hurt him and say right after this was approved, we're gonna double the rate.
Right.
And if they wanted to survive, they'd have to pay, in my opinion.
Okay, so I just, I wanna understand where, what the variance includes and doesn't include. Thank you.
No, no, that's a good question. Yeah, it's not. They're just showing that they can, they can accommodate the flow in other means.
Okay.
All right, Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie? Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. Number six, 211 Old Spring Road, it's petition of the Murray's. Attorney Fallon presented this to construct a detached garage. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved for Terry.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Jane, second.
Thank you, Jane. Terry appreciates it, but I really can't allow that. Let's have a discussion.
The bound's reasonable and in keeping with the architecture of the neighborhood.
Absolutely.
Okay, bring it to vote. Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. Number seven, 56 Shoreham Terrace, petition, Mr. Friedson. Construct the second floor addition at that property. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Jane, second.
Discussion?
Speak up, Terry. The thumbs are being seen.
If you're listed with the hand signal, it's okay. It's recognized for the record. Discussion?
I found the application reasonable. I don't think the the height is quite the issue that was made by the, by the presenters. This is the one with the, the conditional deck, right?
The two decks, yeah, it's on one side, it, you know, which, you know, and you made a point, I picked up on it on the map. I know Jane probably picked up on the, the map that, that, that it, the whole side is shortened by those decks. The neighbor said, well, now the decks are gonna be looking at our property. In my case, there, I respect some privacy. You know, anytime there's a second floor, you're gonna be able to look into your neighbor's yard. You know, whether they have a fence or not. My neighbor has a fence, I can see their backyard from my kitchen window. And, just because my head knob is at feet, and the fence is only six feet. So I didn't really see, appreciate the comments at these times of like something in, but you know, I, I think, I'd probably rather have two small decks out on that than, than windows looking at me. The windows are looking at me 30, 365 days a year.
She was that completely.
So, I didn't, didn't have.
Kevin, you're on. Lot of feedback.
That's a yes, that's a yes.
Kevin, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Kevin, you're off.
Damn, how big.
I gotta have the IT person in my office, that's it.
Gonna buy you a new microphone.
It works through every court hearing I have, every deposition I have, it's only something about the pound, weather. That's the only time I have a problem. I argue before the appellate court, I could argue, and they could hear me. All right, I just, every once in a while, I'll have to mute and unmute for it to work. Number, or on number eight. Mr. Friedman, it was, Brandon, you can, you can sign off if you want. It's up to you. Number eight, 40 Quincy Street, petition of the Murray's. Mr. Chase presented this. It's to construct addition, front side rear porches, and lift it to FEMA. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Jane, second. Terry? All right, discussion?
Seemed to be a reasonable application.
Yeah, this was the corner lot here. The corner lots are difficult to deal with.
Yeah.
And they've always, the house is always positioned either approaching the farm or both. And usually, it's just on one, because they changed most of the zoning regs after these houses were built. The vote, Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. Okay, number nine, 1721 Mill Plain Road. Petition of, for, for Miller, Mr. Chase presented this as well. Construct a second floor addition. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Brian, thank you. Second?
Second, I'll second.
Terry, you already got it.
Okay.
Discussion? This is a little straight up on one side of the house, kind of like finishing off the second floor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just goes, yeah, just goes straight up, doesn't go too closer.
Yeah, and that neighbor is fine with it. It's a little tight on the one side, but the neighbor's fine. Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry? Yes. I say yes. That's five unanimous. Number 10, 1610 Melville, petition of Romanals. And Mr. Levis presented the application. It's for several variances, but it's to construct a rear addition with deck and AC condenser. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Kate. Okay, let's have a discussion.
I didn't think the, I didn't really get the renderings on this, with the scope of the property. But I don't think it was in keeping with the neighborhood, so I wouldn't really object it.
You don't see anything from the street. It's all.
It is, I mean, Jane, you saw it. It's, it's actually, the addition is.
It just cascades down the back. It's like a mullet.
That's a good description.
Actual mullet. That's great.
That's on the record now, Jane.
Yeah, I know, business in the front, party in the back.
And these lots are all, a lot of them are kind of narrow on that side of the street. The other side, you know, they're a little bit shorter. But these are long, narrow lots on that side of Melville. You know, I'm familiar with, we had, we had a request not too long ago on this, on one of the other houses on this side of the street as well. And, yeah, you're not gonna, not gonna be able to tell. It might, you're neighbor to neighbor, you might tell on either side, but those are the only two people on the street that have ever noticed this. And they've, they're, they're fine, fine with it. And it is a tight neighborhood. I think they'd all tell them they didn't like. Jane?
Yes, yes.
What's that noise?
Katie? And Terry's, yes. I say yes. Number 11, 399 South Benson Road. Petition of Lauren and John Faber, and they presented the application. It's to remove an existing deck to the rear, rebuild a new one. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thanks, Brian. Second?
Jane, second.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion?
I think it'll look nicer.
Yeah, they got a, that's a really tight, narrow lot there. You know, they had a lot of, my notes were very tight lot, hard to do anything there.
Did they come before us for, like, a bump out at the second floor? Once upon a time? Yes. Bathroom, yeah. Little out of time. Okay.
And I think it also answers a safety issue that they had with their deck. Gonna be putting good construction where bad was.
All right, bringing the vote. Brian? Says yes, Jane?
Yes.
Katie? Terry?
Yes.
Says yes. I say yes. That passes. Number 12, 320 Lockwood Road. Petition of Forensys, they presented their own application, is to construct a deck and handicap ramp. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion?
Works for me. I don't see any, I don't see anything necessarily restricting about it. I don't see anything that's reasonable.
Right. And you know, future owners, you know, decades from now, can move the ramp if they want to, and that will reduce the coverage.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
It's fine.
The ramp, the ramp can take a decent amount of coverage and that.
Yeah. Right.
Reduce it.
Right.
All right, Brian. Vote? Yes, Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry? That passes. I say yes. Number 13, 10 Overhill Road. Petition of the Santas to construct one-story addition. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved. I tried.
He's hesitating. He doesn't give a big hesitation, but he gives a little bit. Second?
Okay.
Jane, did you second?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
I second.
All right, discussion?
Reasonable to me.
Another corner parked. You know, they're, they're moving it to expand its size, but they're of a minimum on lot size, and they're not hitting floor area.
Right.
So.
Right. It's a reasonable ask. They're not, you know, blowing it out of the park.
2,800 square foot house.
Yeah, right.
You know, it's not, not going crazy. All right, Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. That passes. That concludes our hearing for February. Thank you, everyone. More snow, so.
More?
Have fun with my daughter skiing.
If I mean, I couldn't hear what you said before. I don't hear so well. I couldn't hear if you said that was approved or not approved.
You were approved.
You're approved.
Thank you so much, everybody. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, everyone. See you soon.
Hi, everybody.
Thanks, Daphne.
Daphne, you're up next.